And the Budget Committee, Lieutenant Waldeboro, meeting on May 12th, Tuesday. And I'll call the Select Board to order. And someone will call the Budget Committee to order.
I will call the Budget Committee to order.
Thank you, Bill. And I guess we can do the pledge now and get it over with. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I recall, at the last joint meeting, we had a question about the animal control officer. And was it Chief Lash who was going to develop some information about that?
Yeah.
If you have specific questions about numbers or the...
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to know the amount of calls that we had.
Yep, the year 2019, we had 258. And so far this year, from January 1st till now, we've had 80. And of those 80, this year, they've responded to approximately 47 of them. In their defense, they don't respond to everything. They don't do barking dogs. We do barking dogs. They're coming out emergency only. If not, they're following up with people in the next few days. So if it's an emergency, we're always going. And then if it's something we can refer to the ACO, then we'll refer them to the ACO and the ACO will follow up when they're scheduled to be on call.
Has there been a turnover in people they've had?
So Lincoln's had a hard time getting people to stay working as ACO. It's kind of one of those thankless jobs. So yeah, they've had a hard time staffing.
You think we're getting the money for that?
I think it's worth it that we're not dealing with it. If there was a better solution where my patrol officers weren't dealing with it, yes. But in the past, it hasn't worked well. So this is a... You know, I was kind of waiting for Lincoln County. They said they were going to get full-time position. And I was waiting for that, really hoping that that would be an improvement. We haven't seen that yet. I mean, they don't believe that they go hire anybody. I am feeling good if they do get the full-time position. You know, until then, we're all kind of been pitching in, answering the calls and then referring it to an ACO if it can be referred, you know, when they are on call.
Any other questions on the ACO or comments?
I had a head of thought, which I've been thinking about since last week's meeting. How to come up with a better solution? I mean, you guys are doing a majority of the calls. So we're paying the county $18,000 a year for you to do their job.
Correct.
So we're doing initial response?
Yep.
All the follow-up is done by them?
Now, Justin, we... I hate to put this onto Justin, but if we could pay Justin in that situation... I don't know if Justin will do it. I think that's a question for you to ask him if he's interested possibly doing it.
I mean, and there's other things I have to think about, like we don't have bite gloves. We don't have cages.
Yep.
We'd have to come up with a way to get him down to educate him to the shelter. I mean, and then there's training involved. So there's a lot of other things to think about. But it's something that we can...
But the way it sounds to me, Justin's looking to stay here.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, he's got anything and everything he wants to do here. If you offered somebody $500 a month just to do that job, plus be here, he's going to... Justin's here quite a bit. I'm just throwing Justin's name out because I know he's a master of everything, it seems to be. But if we paid him $500 a month for that, we got the insurance, we could buy a building. It'd be a one-time cost, a building for cages and stuff like that. You could buy all the stuff you needed for it the first year and then you wouldn't have that expense the following year. Maybe we could increase the pay of that or something like that. You know, I was thinking we could probably get it down to like $12,000. So we could save us like $6,000. I'm not sure what insurance is. I'm just going based on maybe $3,000 for insurance for a year.
It's something we'll, you know, we'll obviously have to research.
Yeah. But I just, like Billy said, it's frustrating that we're paying $18,000 a year for a job that's not even being done. And you guys are doing the job. It should be in your department that that money should be going to, if that's who's doing the job.
And a lot of the money is mileage.
Yep.
It's them driving back and forth to the shelter, driving from where they live to the call.
I just thought it might be a solution. I don't know if it is or not. I'm just a ball in the air. Air brainstorm while I'm out digging all by myself and get too many thoughts in my head. So.
Clint?
Is it mostly barking dogs?
No, they're not mostly barking dogs. We have loose dogs. We have stray cats that they're catching. We always respond to dog bites, but then they take care of the quarantine part and then the, you know, following up on their shots and all the information like that. So there is a lot of follow-up work that they're doing that I wouldn't necessarily... I can't necessarily tie my officers up on, and that's why we refer them to the ACOs. So we'll do initial response. The ACOs will follow up on everything else.
So if there's a barking dog, they call you up?
So barking dogs, we're dealing with barking dogs. We treat it like a loud noise complaint.
Thank you.
But how many of those do you get a year?
That's probably half of the ACO calls we get are barking dogs.
So they're actually going to respond to 120 calls, right?
I have a question, and that is, is that an assessment against us that we get whether we use the service or not? Or is that something we can carve out of their budget and say, "Don't charge us for this because we've got our own solution"?
So we only get charged for what they respond to?
Okay, so there's a rate that applies for their response time?
Their rate is their rate, their hourly rate, plus any insurances they have. They're part of the main pension. So when we're paying, we're paying an hourly rate, which is like 16, 17 an hour, plus pension, plus workers' comp, plus social security. And then mileage, like John said. Mileage seems to be the biggest expense on the bills that we get. So I guess it's always going to depend on the amount of calls that you get, what you're going to be invoiced for.
What other communities do they service, John?
They service all of Lincoln County.
All of it?
And I will say that Waldeboro does have the most ACO complaints of all of those towns in the county.
Bill?
When we had an ACO officer, what happened to all the equipment that we had, cages and...
I honestly don't know. I know we have one catch pole left and we have a kennel out back that's been destroyed by snow bluffs. It may have been absorbed. There was some hard traps kicking around?
There's two in the bag.
Well, I mean, we used to have an ACO officer, and I know they had money and they had a lot of equipment. So I'm just kind of curious. What happened to all the equipment?
I've never seen the equipment list. I don't know what they had.
Seth, did you want to?
If we were to pay Justin, 500 figures been thrown out there. Would there be an expectation that he would have to be available 24/7?
I would think there would be.
So, I mean, I, you know, that's something that has to be considered. $500 a month, you know, I don't know how many calls there are in a month or six months. But that's something that... That's something that's...
Well, and I'm not sure. I think he would have to be trained first before he could do it. At least that's been my experience.
I'm not even sure if he wants to do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure he does either, but it's just...
It's hard to fill. And that's why when Lincoln said, "Yeah, we'll take care of it," you know, I was happy to say, "Okay." Throw some money away. It's a headache. The ACO thing is not fun when they deal with it. Just so much time involved.
Seth?
The money from the revenue generated from dog licenses and that sort of thing, does that go towards that?
No, it just doesn't. It's general fund.
Just general fund.
Julie? Julie?
Val, you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was waving my hand here. I don't know if it's...
Oh, sorry. What do you have to say now?
What's that?
What do you have to say?
Well, I was just thinking, if it seems like depending on one person who we don't know will actually take the position to... If we're depending on that option to cut money out of the budget and that doesn't come through, I would worry that we can't fulfill our obligations to deal with the animals. If we can save some money there with the ACO, that'd be great. But if it's not... If we could still maintain the ability to have Lincoln County take care of stuff for us and then if we don't, if we can come up with a better solution, save money by doing it, I'm all for that. But depending on one person that we don't know, if they're actually going to accept the position, that worries me a little bit. Did that come through all right?
Yeah, I heard you.
Any more comments or questions on this topic? After we're done with this meeting, a joint meeting, we will be voting on a budget. Sandy?
I'd just like to say 24/7 is a fast move on anybody. Question if they have another job. I mean, would you do that first than your other job or, I mean...
I'm sure it would be like we're doing now. We, you know, patrol officers handle the initial complaint and all the follow-up stuff that would have to be done, that's something different with the ACO title. So we're here 24/7 anyway, so I'm sure it'd be kind of like what we've been doing like at now. It'd be initial and big follow-up.
Sorry, John had a comment to me.
Yeah, well, I like the concept of farming it out to Lincoln County, just as a point of order. But are we generating any revenues? Are there any fees or fines associated with your calls that are generating any revenue?
The only thing I... We're not really bringing in...
Not much to speak of, but there's a dangerous dog revenue that's fairly new, and so that'll trickle in. But it's not a lot.
I mean, we're also paying for cats and dogs to be vaccinated.
Euthanized and strays that come in and they don't have an identifiable owner. We end up getting, having to pay the emergency debt bills. A lot of times if it's during office hours, they'll call. We haven't had any calls in a while.
Yeah.
But they'll call for authorization.
And saving a cat is not a good phone call to make to me because I'm going to say, "Save the cat." So.
Seth?
Sorry. The... Do they follow up on the complaints that you get, even though they may not respond? Are they adequately following up on the complaints?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, we've had a few complaints that they weren't. And that had to do with the person who had the call had left and had never passed on those calls. So we had... It was...
We had a few.
Yeah, there were a few, but I think those were from...
I think that's the resolve.
It was from somebody leaving and not telling people that they were working on these complaints.
So the communication part was on this end, not so much the county? Is that what I'm...
So, no, the communication part was so they had a call, they had one person, they had one ACO working on it. That ACO quit, done, never passed it along to new ACO. So it never completely got followed up on. And a lot of things, they, like wild animals, they don't do. That's the ward service. And a lot of times, it's just a, it's an education thing that they're not passing on. Like the ACO should tell them, "Hey, look, it's a ward service thing." And then the ward service isn't following up on it. So it's a mixture of stuff. And then we field it and we try to explain it, but by then it's usually too late and they're upset. That's the calls we've been getting.
So if the town, let's say it's Justin or whoever did it, for $500 a month?
Nobody's going to do it for $500 a month.
No, I mean, that's...
I'm sorry. You could pay me to deal with that for $500 a month.
I wouldn't want to be available 24/7 for $500.
$500 a month isn't...
And then there's going to be other work. And then you've got the benefits and...
All the expenses go up, the salaries go up, right?
I think it's a valid idea to explore. It's just not a valid idea to explore tonight. I think you've almost got to, you've got to put the money in the budget or else you got to tell John, "Your ACO figured it out." I mean, that's, at this late game, that's where we've got to go or else we're just talking to talk. So it's, I can't give you good numbers about anything. John can't. We don't even know if Justin wants to do it. So I think it's a great idea to explore for the future, but for this budget, I think we're where we're at. So that's kind of where I'm at.
That pretty much sums it up.
And I'm sorry. I normally love ideas.
It is a good idea.
It's a good idea. It's just not a good idea.
Not tonight, maybe.
Got it. It's just, it's just, we don't have the time to explore it to the full extent that we need to. And I know that we have to talk about the library and I know that Marcus is here wanting to make a plea for his recreation department.
Okay, so are we done? Or is everybody okay with this? Is there a motion of any kind to change what we have in the budget or... Sounds like we're good to go with that number then.
So when we come out, it's 18?
Yeah. Well, that's just what we budget. It might turn out to be 16 or 15 or 19.
Yes.
You know, by the time they have the number of calls. But it gives us something to look at for next year.
I don't know that we can talk about the school budget at this point because we weren't able to have anybody respond positively to the invitation that we made. It's been put off to perhaps a later date to have that conversation.
I asked Steve. He wanted to have the Waldeboro board members, his business administrator himself. This was not a convenient night for them, so then I asked him what date for... And honestly, we have to have all this done because I have to get the ballot to who needs, everything needs to go to on Friday. So it's not like there's a lot of options.
So there were two others pending, one is the library and one is the recreation department. Can we talk to Marcus first about recreation? Do you have something you wanted to revisit?
Sure. I mean, so we talked last meeting about my budget being cut down to eight hours a week. And Val asked me a question, "What would I be able to do with that?" And I didn't feel like I gave him a great answer, so I kind of visited that on my own. And so out of all my programs, not a lot of them I would be able to leave open throughout the year at eight hours a week. Summer rec would be gone, and I know we talked about that a little bit more at length. And then even if it's, even if you restored my department fully, that might not happen just with everything that's going on. Pickleball would be gone. Youth soccer in the fall would be gone. Co-ed softball would be gone. We had a big group get together and really want the ice rink to come back this winter. I would not have enough time to do that. The tournaments I run in the, for the fifth and sixth boys and girls basketball in the late winter would be gone. And I probably wouldn't have much to do with Waldeboro Day, not having the time to coordinate any of that. Summer Little League, Little League is still pushing forward with wanting to do something in the summer. And because it's a budget, we'd still be talking about them in the spring of '21. They're not a town-run organization, so maybe they could swing things together without me, but I can tell you that I do a lot for them. A lot of the stuff that I do for my soccer programs and everything else, I do for them. I order all their shirts. I put together their schedule that takes me a week. It's pretty involved there. Lost track. Last year I helped out with the Merry and Bright contest. It wasn't very big, the Christmas light contest. I could probably still help a little bit with that. And then I'd have like my ski club and my K-2 basketball program. I could probably swing one of those and not the other because they run at the same time. And then I would be able to keep open my fall open gym, my fall tumbling class, and pitch hit and run in the spring. The senior bus trip got taken out of the budget anyways, so I wouldn't be able to do that. It really, when I sat down to look at it, like how many hours a week do I put into these programs during a normal year? You know, it was a 40-hour-a-week job. And so I got, you know, got looking at, you know, which ones took weeks to do or all week to do and which ones, you know, I could get by with. You know, it was like a day of planning and then a day of doing it or, you know, stuff. Because we talked about the eight hours a week. If I'm not using it at the beginning, there might be a little more at the end to finagle. And that's kind of what I came up with, and I wasn't very encouraged by it. And I know that boss lady and I, we tend to disagree on it a little bit. I, you know, I see the world opening up a little bit, where, you know, they're opening businesses. And my fear is that, you know, I've been on other calls with recreation directors all over the state and they're still planning on summer rec. And granted, they're a lot bigger programs, they're a lot bigger towns than here, but they're still pushing forward with everything, even as early as summer and fall. And we're saying, "We're done for the year." And I know it's more of a money question than anything else, but I just would hate to see the world open back up and, you know, people want to get out, want to send their kids to something or want to go play co-ed softball with their friends. And, you know, we're not there to help them, I guess. So I did come up with a 16-hour-a-week budget or a program and that if you gave me 16 hours a week, I could probably get the youth soccer and co-ed softball back in there. I could do both ski club and basketball. And then some of the, some of the ones I didn't think I could get in turned to, you know, maybe. It gives me a little more flexibility. And Julie's been great, you know, if we're going to push forward with the town clerk slash rec director idea, I will have a little bit of flexibility here in the office. But my worry is I have a lot of field maintenance. Like if I'm stuck in the office doing clerk stuff and maybe even rec stuff, I'm not going to be able to get away to go do the fields, keep up with the maintenance that they require to keep them looking nice. I mean, we built some awesome fields 10, 12 years ago, and Kyle did a great job keeping them up. And I've been doing my best to keep them looking nice. And I would hate to see a year where they don't get enough attention. And we put a lot into them, even as late as last, yeah, put a lot of effort last summer in to get the drainage fixed up, get some weeds out of there. And they're, even now, they're really looking good. But, you know, when these budgets get cut out, it takes time away from them and our ice park might not be so nice in a year. That's kind of my plea. Julie and I sat down and the change, if it were to go up to 16 hours a week for rec, would up my budget by $10,278. So I guess that's up for you guys to decide, but that's my fear, is that the world's going to open back up and I'm not going to be there to provide what I normally do. And I know, you know, maybe the world doesn't. There's different political opinions on that, but that's my personal fear. Yeah, I'm, like I said, super grateful the town has kept me on and helped me keep my job. I'll do whatever that takes, but this is kind of me fighting for my department a little bit. I'm open to any questions.
Bill?
Julie, last meeting you said that we had a little wiggle room. So what is that little wiggle room? If you don't mind.
$36,000.
$36,000.
$36,000 in the house? Thank you. And John, thank you for coming and talking about the ACO.
On this green sheet you gave us last week, Marcus's, the rectifier was on here somewhere, I thought, that is a case of...
On the expense side, under community services.
Under community services.
17, 251 is the number.
Okay.
So we cut $65,000 out of that budget.
What was your number, Marcus?
She told me it was 17, 251.
Yep.
When she had in there for eight hours a week.
Yep, but what was it for the...
Sixteen hours would take it to 27, 529. It would at least allow me to open up a few other programs. I had some numbers too. The youth soccer and the fall co-ed softball are two of my biggest programs. So to cut those out, like in 2019, I had 119 kids play youth soccer here in Waldeboro and around 200 play adult co-ed softball. So I have numbers for all those in 2019. And some of these are duplicates and some of these are non-residents, but I have 1,564 participants in my programs in 2019.
Is it all right?
With the 16 hours, is that going to do anything for this ice rink or no?
The ice rink?
Yeah.
I could probably do a little more. It depends how much that group really wants to help. Because the ice rink, even at 40 hours, the ice rink was more than I could handle. I did it myself one winter and it didn't go very well. The ice rink wasn't open very often because every time it snows, not just four feet or two feet, you know.
But then we got to put that back in the budget too.
Yeah, we did take that out. The two, you know, you get two inches of snow, you've got to go out there and shovel it off. And I'm all for it. I think it's a great community thing that brings people together, but they are a lot of work.
Yep.
And more than one person can handle. You know, we had, we held a meeting with that, that group. We had a pretty good showing on Facebook. They had a pretty big group going that wanted to do it. And we held a meeting and we had eight people show up, something like that. I don't know how many people are in that group, 70 people. So, I mean, people are there. It's just if people want to, if people want to work for it, I'll do all I can and make it happen. But at 16 hours a week, it's going to be tough, especially if I have to be in here working the clerk desk. I'm not going to be able to be out there shoveling unless, you know, we'll see what kind of flexibility there is with that.
And I think you have to realize too, if you're going to not... We also have to do a cost analysis for each thing. If you have so many kids that only, you know, it's great, we want to have youth soccer or something happens and only 10 people show up, that's, two teams does not a program make. I mean, I think we have to be honest about that because things... And you're right, I tend to be more pessimistic because I think I'm supposed to be. But I think that each, if we're putting more money into the program, there's got to be a litmus test of whether it proceeds or not, you know? Are 15 kids worth of summer program? Are, you know, 15 kids worth of a whole program? I mean, those are the, and those are hard questions. But, so I think that the notion that we put the money back in the budget means that this is happening, it could mean it's not too. At least it gives them the flexibility of if there is the heewing pride, he can then proceed with some. But if there isn't, then there's really no harm other than we've committed to the money in the budget. And if it's not used, it will...
That's what I was wondering, is if he doesn't have a fall program, if things go south again, the money's still there or just...
And he could use it in the spring.
And you could use it in the spring.
And that's, you know, I get, you know, and that's where we've been different on this. I, you know, I see the world opening back up. That's my view. you know, I see the world opening back up. That's my view, you know, Little League's still talking about having a summer thing going on, you know, Julie doesn't think so. There might not be, when there might not be fall sports, if, you know, if you never, you never know. And if there's not, if there's not sports, if we can't get out to do that type of stuff, then I I understand, I understand why we're here, cutting my budget. But if it's, you know, I I guess I tend to be optimistic that way. And looking at the eight-hour-a-week one, you know, the the three things that it left open were really low number, you know, basically low maintenance programs, things that were easy to accomplish in eight hours a week. If we had the more, you know, when you open it up to a little bit more, then we get the the soccer with the over a hundred kids, the co-ed softball with over two hundred people, you know, basketball and ski club with seventy people, you know, it 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 adds, you're reaching more people if if things do open up.
Well, Peg, I mean, um, Tanya will be thrilled that you're here for ski club. That way, we don't have to deal with the checks this year on a Friday.
Did you have a question, Bill?
I'm just gonna see if the hell.
Still here.
Did you have anything for Marcus?
Well, I wanna thank him for going through his figures and and, uh, kinda outlining what what the impact would be. Um, and I, my feeling is that putting ten thousand back in to have the option to do the summer program i- is not a bad idea. I I I like that.
Well, it would be more for the fall programming.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, 'cause the summer programming and what the sidelines are going to be, that's still haven't to be established.
This was the year I was going to make the jump from a part-time camp to a full-time camp, which was a huge undertaking in itself, and then to add all the extra restrictions that are being put on camps right now, like we'd we'd have to invest in a lot of cleaning supplies, and it would be less field, it would look completely different. I sat in on a meeting today on the computer, and the the bigger towns that are still pushing forward with that, they are jumping through hoops to make it happen, but they have established programs. Um, I, you know, if if the numbers are there, I talked to Julie, you know, maybe we don't run a summer, a traditional summer camp like we have, where kids show up to the gym, we do field trips, but, you know, if I have the hours and things open up, may, you know, maybe I can run a a one-week soccer camp at night or a one-week basketball camp or or anything, you know? It's just not your traditional stuff, but still do something to get people out.
Arvin wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of dynamics involved here, uh, some controllable, some uncontrollable. And in listening to this and in talking about the youth of the of the city, um, and all the talks are needing to direct the youth into positive programs, um, if we're gonna use some money, I'd rather not keep it in a slush fund. Um, and I'm I'm for putting another eight hours in. Uh, the ten thousand dollars, I think, is well spent on the youth. If we need it, we have it. If we don't need it, we won't spend it.
But we can spend it in the spring when.
Yeah, as Julie said, we don't need the money as a litmus test. We can use the the need, the attendance, that type of thing for the litmus, but at least the money is there. And frankly, at eight hours a a week, we effectively wipe out the recreation department.
That's the way I felt.
So, I, uh, I'm for the the additional eight hours in the money.
Would you like to make a motion, Arvin?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, increase the recreation department by eight hours to a total of sixteen hours a week, uh, for an additional ten thousand dollars with a budget.
Well, what was the exact number there?
Ten, ten two seventy-eight.
Yeah, so, uh, we're twenty-seven thousand.
Five twenty-nine.
Who is it?
Five twenty-nine, twenty-seven thousand five twenty-nine.
Five twenty-nine, twenty-seven thousand five twenty-nine.
Okay, that's with the budget committee, but that motion originated, so Bill, it's your call. We can sit here on the select board and weigh in after you guys are done.
You want us to vote for this, or do you wanna take it as an ask?
I'm not gonna stand on formality.
Really?
It's a practical thing.
That's a fair ask. All right, we've got a motion on the floor to make the recreation department's number twenty-seven five twenty-nine. Is there a second?
How's that, Bill?
Any discussion from the budget committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, four.
And Val said yes.
I got it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 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 four.
Zero yes?
Zero yes. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Headshot.
Thank you. So there's, uh, the budget committee has moved, uh, voted in favor of a new budget amount for recreation in the, uh, so the total of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think Marcus is doing an excellent job.
Mike is willing us to be flexible and to work with the situation. Thank you.
He's been, he's been absolutely outstanding with that.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Five zero. Okay, libraries, the next thing.
I forwarded everybody, uh, an email, um, and I gave you a hard copy too of the email of, uh, requests from the library for reconsideration of the amount.
Thank you all. Thank you, Marcus. So if I read this correctly, we we cut fifteen thousand dollars at our last meeting, and the request is to restore twenty-five hundred of that cut, so the.
Well, you didn't, you haven't done any, you haven't done anything.
We left this up in the air too.
This was a recommendation of where you could cut.
That's right. Okay, so I stand corrected. Thank you. So, the rec, the request is that instead of cutting fifteen, we cut twelve thousand five hundred. That's, that was their request? That was their request. That brings their total budget up to sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the for the town's share, for the year, for the budget year. Is that under, no, it's still not under community services.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a library. I get you.
I've been thinking about the library, um, throughout our last meeting, and I know that the library usage is higher during poor economic times. That's been the tradition. That's what happens because it's available to people all ages, all wages, uh, can go in and make use of the computers, the newspaper. I gave up the newspaper once and rented the library instead. And that's what I think a lot of other people do. Um, so I was a little concerned. The other thing, and I didn't get a chance to look at, there's a formula, I don't know if you do that, Bob, where it shows the investment, what, and the, the, the library's a good investment, both financially and 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 in human terms, um, but there's on the, I think, the Central Maine Library District website, uh, calculator of sorts that that will give you what your, uh, rate of return is for the dollar.
If I recall, it's something like four hundred percent.
It's it's, it's a good, it's a great investment.
You put seventy-five in, you get four times that.
Yeah, yeah, it really is a good investment, and it is, um, a real asset to our community. I remember when someone came here and said, "The sign of a good community is a bakery, a bar, and a bookstore," and she said, "We have the library. That's our bookstore." "We have a bar. We need another bakery."
Awesome.
Um, so those were some of, that was, that was one of my concerns, is that it does open their doors for people when they, um, have lost money.
Any other, Bill?
Julie's like, man, he's not shutting up.
That's fine.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last meeting, Julie, when you talked about the community services, you stated that it's a lot easier to take away when they have a paid employee. You might have said something to that effect?
It's a lot easier to take away if they got money for the PPE.
Right.
For the PPA.
Instead of taking away from a volunteer group, right?
I don't rea- I thought I said something about if they got PPA, it was easier to take away from.
I got the impression when you said it, you was talking about paid, when they had a paid employee. It was either to reduce, it was easy easier to reduce from a group that had a paid employee than it was a volunteer organization.
I I thought when I said that, I was talking, something to that effect. I was talking about it was easy. I found it much easier if they received a PPE, PP, I keep saying PPE because it's PPE, PPA.
Oh, that's a federal government loan.
Right, a PPA loan that paid your employees.
Right.
Then you didn't have, you you didn't have to use your payroll to pay that employee, those employees. So you essentially, you're already in this year's budget. So you got, say, an eighteen thousand dollar loan that turns into a grant.
Mm-hmm.
So you got an eighteen thousand dollar grant to cover that pay period, so if you're getting, so where's,
No, I I believe, you're you're correct. You said that when we was, when we.
But I don't, I don't remember.
When we was under like the Red Cross and all that stuff, but under this, I was pretty sure you made a comment or something about if they got a paid, if they had a paid employee. It was easier to reduce, 'cause we was trying to figure out how you came to that number, taking that much away from the library.
I.
We can go to the table.
It was under what they got for their PPA.
Okay.
I, I don't think I.
Well, I'm not really slamming you. Where I'm going with this is with the theater.
I'll have to, I'll have to look.
The theater has a paid employee, I believe, a paid administrator.
They do.
That, the only reason I did reduce that is because that's on the ballot to be voted on.
No, that was the reason, when we sat here, I questioned them that it wouldn't be on the ballot if we'd made it five thousand, and they said they would not put it on the ballot.
Was that last year?
No, that was this year. If I'm hallucinating, somebody tell me.
That could be my mistake then. I forgot that part.
So, they do have.
Feel free to cut. I I mean, cut more, I I'm.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if the theater has a paid employee or a paid administrator, I would like to maybe reduce the theater by a couple thousand and throw it back at the library. Just a thought.
Do you know how many patrons use the library? They keep track. Do you, do you have any idea?
It's about twenty-five hundred, in that range.
And lots of children.
Yep.
I'm still here, and, um, actually Kat is here. Are there any direct questions for the library director? Are there any questions?
Well, one question, Waldemar, was how many, how many patr- patrons do we have now?
How many patrons?
Yeah.
Wait, Bob, I don't know if you can hear me. We have about, um, twenty-four, twenty to twenty-five hundred active, um, patron records.
That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. That's a lot of people.
Can you, can you blend the library right now?
They will have curbside delivery starting tomorrow.
That's what they thought.
Yeah.
Yep, she said in here, I didn't realize that they'd been a short staff, so they're catching up with stuff that they haven't been able to do.
That's been an ongoing problem for for a number of years.
Did the Waldo Theater apply for any?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, I don't know. I I don't know if they applied. I I'm guessing they would have. I mean, I can't think of a nonprofit in town that wouldn't have.
He's got curious.
And I don't know whether they were successful or not. Sandy?
Yeah, I guess. They apply for the PPA, yeah?
Did they get money?
Oh, I don't know if they got money or anything for that, but that's what they do.
Oh, no, 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 this is for the petition. Yeah, that was the request. No, the the, for the PPA funds, I don't know. I I honestly, I don't know. I haven't talked to Kate. I've been a little busy.
Yeah.
Just a little.
Just a little.
I don't know.
So, Bob, you talked about adding twenty-five hundred back into the library. Is that what you said?
That's their request.
Adding twenty-five hundred back in.
Adding twenty-five hundred, so that would be sixty-two five.
And Billy would mention that if you take.
Took two.
Took two, that would give them forty-five.
We have twenty-five thousand to work with.
And just bear in mind, then, you're pitting two nonprofits against each other. And I will say this because if Marcus had stayed, he would say, and he serves fifteen hundred children in this community, and he would expect. He, I, I think my department heads, and I'm and I'm going to speak very, uh, they're, I'm gonna speak for them. We lost people. We lost a person in our budget, so just bear that in mind. And I'm not saying that to be dramatic, but there were a lot of things cut out of town services, so.
There were, you're right.
I'm just saying that. I I appreciate it, but at the same token, people in this town also look at the library as it's a funded by the public, and that perception, I always said in my email to my, in my letter to my employees, is that we have the cloak of the public over us at all times. They pay our salaries. So, you know, when we were here, we were here, you know? Um, it's very hard to justify, and that's part of the issue that came back, and I think, Kat, you need to be aware of this, is paying people to do their job from home is a very, that sounds great, but that's the problem that a lot of people have with what's happening on the state level right now. It's a lot of problems with what people have happening here right now, um, in local municipalities. So we just have to be cognizant of how how that that looks, and and that's, you know, and 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 we can't forget, we cut a lot out of our town's budget, so I I I. It's it's a hard thing, so if you're going, I I would, I would suggest if you wanna take money, I would take it out of the LD one fund there unless you feel strongly about the Waldo. Um, but I I would hate to say I'm gonna give it up here and not here. I, and and that was my fault, Billy, totally, because I'm thinking, oh, wait, that's on the ballot, so. Actually, it's not, 'cause it's not on the warrant, so you're right.
That ought to be.
You're right, it's not. Lot of, lot of stuff going on in this.
I understand.
And none of these decisions were easy, believe me, and I want everybody to understand that. None of this was easy. None of this was pleasant. It's still not easy. It's still not pleasant. If you sat through a meeting with me this morning, you would have gotten unpleasant, Julie. Um, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and it changes every day, you know? Um, I'm still waiting to find out what the revenue numbers were, 'cause we were told there would be revenue numbers coming out this week by the the governor, and we still haven't heard those revenue numbers. So I don't know how she's expecting us to make decisions on our budgets when she darn well knows that come this Friday, we've gotta have everything turned in, so it makes it complicated when we're told on Friday, you'll have these numbers, and here we sit Tuesday, and there's no inkling of a number. So there's a lot of frustration to go around, and I'm not just, I'm not, I'm not, a- and I'm sure there's other issues. Is there going to be federal, um, money coming from above? a- and I'm sure there's other issues. Is there going to be federal, um, money coming from above? Um, and what will that look like? And I don't know those either. And it's just like what Marcus said. I can't predict the future, but I think I need to be a little more pessimistic. So that's where I'm at.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add or questions they'd like to ask?
So are we saying you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, one hundred.
So you didn't cut back some on the Waldo because you thought they were?
I thought for some reason, because we had the whole, what was that?
Yeah.
Um, petition thing. I, I, yeah, I didn't.
But there again, we also said if you didn't put it on the ballot, we would give you the five thousand. So that's kind of going back on what we said too.
But also, we didn't know this was gonna happen.
Right.
Right, and we, we-
I understand that, but.
We told all these other people what they were gonna get.
And I think they would be very understanding either way. I, I, I'm just saying that if you're gonna, uh-huh. You also have that other money. I, I would hate to pit two nonprofits in town that are equally wonderful to, to not.
I just, I, they would've put it on the ballot if this, you know, if they, if anybody knew this was gonna happen. It would probably get voted in, you know, maybe not.
Uh, maybe not now. I don't know. I don't know what people's litmus test is. That's my word today, litmus test. I guess I got.
So.
Bill?
So where do we stand on our wiggle room money now? Twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand?
We had thirty-six thousand. We gave Marcus ten thousand, two hundred, and we were twenty-five thousand. I'm sorry.
Okay. I mean, if, if the library was okay with that, that was the request, I wouldn't wanna go any higher than that. I mean, I think if they're gonna know what they're, they're capable of, if they needed five thousand, they'd probably ask for five thousand.
Well, yeah, she did have all the numbers.
She's got operating.
She'd love to have more than five thousand. Everybody would, but I, but I think they're reasonable and-
Yep, I think they're being very reasonable. But I don't have a problem with that.
What is the thing? Sixty-two-five?
Sixty-two-five, it would be, yeah.
Can we move on now?
You wanna make a motion, Phil? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at the select board? So the motion is, uh, to approve sixty-two thousand, five hundred for the library for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. All in favor? That's set. Four, how many? I'm sorry, who's voting yes? One, two, three, four. Against? One, against. So the vote is four to one. Budget committee?
Uh, select board has presented a number of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Waldo Public Library. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second. Any discussion?
Is that a twenty-five thousand with the LD, or does it matter? We have specifically said-
Yes.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? Stated? Unstated? I got that. Seven, zero, one.
Okay. Is it, are there any other, other than actually voting on the-
You're welcome, Kat.
Other than voting on the amended budget. Um, are there any other budgetary issues we'd like to bring up tonight?
Hey, what does that bring down the, the low LD1 to?
Well, it's twenty-two-five. The low would be twenty-two thousand, five hundred estimated.
Yeah, I just, I feel bad cutting people. And I'd love to say, let's take that twenty-two and put it in a discretionary fund where we could do something, but I'm afraid of the revenue.
Bill?
I just wanna say, Julie and Peg, it'll still be on the LD1 after all this. You guys done a good job.
Thank you. It wasn't easy, believe me. It's not, it's not easy.
When we first started, we were a hundred and seventy-two thousand above. I'm just saying.
You guys, you guys did a good job.
Process to go through.
I just feel so mean. I just feel so mean. Actually, I do mean nicely. I do mean nicely sometimes, sometimes not. I'm trying.
So I guess we need to vote on an amended budget number.
Well, you have to vote, yeah.
You have to vote on each one, like you've done in the past. Or your, your revenue total.
There you go. Sunshine.
Okay, but there are two of these, there are two of these numbers that have changed.
Right. Peg, how you want it. Peg, why don't you let Peg get it open? Yeah, tell you.
Uh, so for recreation, I see twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, twenty-nine.
So we've already voted on that.
Right. And you voted on the, um-
And we voted on the, the library change as well.
Right, so you really only need to do those two. Sorry.
That's, that's, that's an amendment to the budget, basically, that we've done. Everything else stays the same.
So what's the total for community service?
Total for community service is seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and four.
Right, so you've gotta vote-
So we need to move seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and four for community services. Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Now that, just to clarify, that includes-
And extra twenty-five hundred dollars.
And the library.
Vote twelve thousand.
No, that only, that only is the library. You've gotta vote everything here that-
And you both run here, right?
Because you didn't do that last week.
No, um, that's right. Okay, thank you.
That's why I handed it to you.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Better get my glasses on.
You better.
Is he all set?
I think so. He thought they voted last week.
I, I was kinda confused for two seconds, I said myself.
So, here we go.
Lot of voting, actually.
Lot of voting.
Lot of voting.
So, um, general fund revenues. Um, is there a motion for two million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars?
Almost.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor? Bill?
You wanna repeat that number again?
Please.
Two million? What'd you say?
One hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty.
So moved.
The first one is all ready.
All right. General fund, select board has presented a number of two million, one hundred and fifty-nine, four thirty. Now, I heard you say, so moved?
So moved, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I agree. Any other discussion? Here are none. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, zero. Budget committee.
Okay, um, select board budget, reduced to thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ah, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five, zero.
Uh, the select board has presented a number under the select board for thirty-nine thousand, three twenty-two. Is there a motion? Seth, is there a second? Any other discussion? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Opposite town manager. Uh, the number was one fifty-eight, five forty-five, where the new number is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Select board's presented a number of one twenty-seven, one sixty-four for the office of the town manager. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Steve, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Assessment. Uh, the number was a hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. Sorry. Yeah, the new number is eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Uh, select board's presented a number for the assessment, assessment of eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. Any taking a motion? The second? Gordon. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Finance. Uh, the old number was two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. The new number is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Select board's presented a number of one eighty-five, eight forty-three for finance. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? Gordon. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Town clerk. The old number was, uh, ninety thousand, six hundred and seven. The new number is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
New number of seventy-three, three eighty-one for town clerk. Is there a motion? Gordon. Second? Seth? Discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. I have a question, Julie.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, with, uh, the increase in Marcus's budget for recreation, is this still gonna work with the town clerk?
Is he still gonna work with the town clerk?
Yes.
Yes, Julie says.
Okay.
You all set now?
I'm all set.
Okay, call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay.
I have a. Sorry. Are we moving? Did you get your vote on that, Bill?
Yeah, eight, zero.
Thank you, town clerk. Next is municipal building. Fiscal year twenty was sixty thousand, one oh one. The initial budget for this year, twenty-one, was seventy-three, eight eighty-nine. The new number, sorry, was seventy thousand, seven eighty-nine. The new number is sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Approved. Five, zero.
Municipal building, sixty-three, five thirty-nine. Is there a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Zero.
Okay, EMS, uh, the approved amount for, initially approved amount for fiscal year twenty-one was eight eighty-three, nine seventy. The proposed reduction, reduced amount is eight fifty-one, six ninety-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, sorry.
Thank you. All in favor? Five, zero.
Uh, EMS has been presented eight fifty-one, six ninety-eight. Uh, is there a motion? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay, next one is fire department. Uh, we initially approved one seventy-seven, one twenty. The new number is one seventy-two, five twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Fire department, number one seventy-two, five twenty-nine, uh, five twenty-eight. Is there a motion? Senator, second? Gordon, Steve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Uh, the next one is police. The initial approval was for eight fifty-eight, four twenty-two. The new, new proposed amount is eight thirty-three, eight sixteen. Eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Five, zero.
Police. Eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen. Is there a motion? Senator, second?
Second.
Seth? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay. Shellfish?
Public Works. You can skip to Public Works.
No change on those.
Uh, okay, thank you. Public Works is way down there.
Number twenty-eight.
Thanks, Peg, because there aren't any changes to the-
That's right.
To the others. Okay, Public Works. Thank you very much. Taking up time here. The old number approved was eight eighty-seven, five thirty-six. The new number proposed is eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-four. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Public Works, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-four. Is there a motion? Gordon, second?
Second.
Seth? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay, parks and cemeteries.
No change.
There's no change. Thank you. General assistance, there's a small change. Uh, the original one was twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen. The new one is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and four. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
General assistance, twenty-two thousand, six oh four. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? Gordon. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay, social services. The original amount was thirteen thousand, nine hundred and two. The new proposed amount is four thousand, eight hundred and two. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Abden. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
So, social services, four thousand, eight hundred and two. Is there a motion? Gordon, second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Okay, recreation was originally eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. The proposed new amount is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Recreation, his number is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seth? Is second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Friendship Street School is the next item. The original amount was seventeen thousand and seventy-one dollars. The new proposed amount is three thousand, eight hundred and four, eight hundred and forty dollars. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Abden. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Friendship Street School, three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Is there a motion? Steve, second? Seth? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Correct?
Oh, yeah.
Eight, zero.
The next one is community services. The initial amount was ninety-three thousand, six hundred and four. The new amount is seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and four. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Abden, thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Clint was, Clint was, uh-
The new seven eight one oh four.
Seven eight one oh four.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Five, zero. Sorry, Katie, is that a yes?
No.
No, Katie's is a no. So we've got four to one. Four in favor, one again. Thank you, Katie.
Community service, number presented is seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and four. Is there a motion?
Oh, my.
Second? Seth? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six, four, two, against.
Okay, the next one is planning and development for, the original one was one fifty-six, eight thirty-five. The new proposed amount is one forty-three, nine hundred and one.
Go ahead, Clint. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thanks, Clint. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
Planning and development, a hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And then the next one with the change is other financing. It was originally five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-three. The new amount proposed is four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three. Is there a motion, please?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Under the finances...
Any discussions?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Jumping the gun, Bob.
Five-zero.
Other finances is four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three. Is there a motion? Seth? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Getting excited with a big number there, Billy?
Nah. Yeah, I did. Jumping the gun on Bob. All in favor again? Eight-zero.
Did you get all that, Peg?
Yes, and you have to do capital revenue and expenses, and then we're done. It's on the same page, lower, way low. Even though the capital is its own fund.
Yep.
You voted on it.
What's the total on that?
So, um, in February, you voted for the total of revenue and expenses is both three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand each. So, it was total revenue, three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. Total expenses, three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. And then your new numbers are a hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, five-hundred. You should have it on the big sheet.
Is that, is that clear to everyone?
One-ninety-one, five-hundred, capital reserve?
Uh, the capital reserve would be one-ninety-one, one, one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, five-hundred, and the capital reserve, that's the revenue, and the capital reserve expense would be the same number, one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, five-hundred. Is there a motion?
Some move. Second?
Okay, we're voting on both the revenue and the expense side this time, just to make them clear. Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
Capital reserve revenue and capital reserve expense, one-ninety-one, five-hundred. Motion, Gordon? Second? Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
Anything else from the budget committee or concerned or comments?
I wanna thank Billy for doing a fine job.
You're welcome, though. Don't be late. Don't miss another one.
Good luck in your procedure.
Thank you.
Be well.
Be amazing.
And thank you, Julie.
Question, answer?
While you were...
No, I gotta do manual math. Yeah, thank you, Seth. Thank you, Seth.
What's that, Peggy? You had this, that, and that.
There we go. I'm retarded. I definitely need a calculator. I'll be right back.
It'll be in the range of four-and-a-half million.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty low now. I went to do this twice.
Three, two a month.
I know. I did that.
Yeah, CJ said he'd do it when you're at a restaurant.
I like those little greenhouses. They have an asterisk down. Did you see them?
Oh, I saw that on the news.
The little... They have these little greenhouses now they put outside so that you can...
Have your own space.
You have your own space.
Like plexiglass kind of thing.
Weird.
It, it is odd, but...
Picture of everybody wearing it or just you wearing it?
Who do you want me to talk to?
I got four million, four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, and ninety. So, it's four million, four-two-three-zero-nine-zero.
Now, what's the total amount again, Peg?
Four million, four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, and ninety dollars. So, four-four-two-three-zero-nine-zero.
Alex, it's four... Four... Hey, we cut that down at the food pantry. It's like family of four, dog, cat food. We got your guest, Karen Hagar, from the YMCA, delivered us cat food this morning, or actually last night.
Mr. Chairman, are you all set?
Yes.
For the budget committee?
You're welcome to adjourn if you wish.
Entertaining motion to adjourn? So moved, second? Any, no discussion left?
Thanks very much.
Bye, thanks for coming, everybody, and thanks for wearing a mask.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on our agenda. Are you okay, Max?
Wait, wait, wait. We just gotta wait. Hey, Gordon? Hundred-and-twenty-four families today.
I'm doing the twenty-four.
Yeah, see, I'm...
Twenty...
Can we do that first?
Yeah.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
Is it okay if we...
More sink, more, more one and two family members and less big families, so it's switching every week.
Are these all Waldorfer people, or don't we know for sure?
Uh, I would say, I think maybe there was two from Bremen, but that's part of what the food pantry serves.
Yeah. It is beautiful.
Okay, you have them on their mats?
Yeah.
And who, who is it?
Hold on. They can, they can speak.
Greg Lake.
Lake.
I think, I think it's from the, um, Mark, Mark, in Hawaii.
But in Hawaii, okay.
That's good. Put him on a chair. Hi!
Yeah, can you guys talk for a minute?
Yeah, we can see you.
We can see you. Can you, can you hear us? Hello?
We, we can't see anyone, but that's not...
Do we need to call the meeting?
Uh...
We, we called the order.
We already...
Yeah, they, they adjourned and left, but we called ours to order.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I can use the camera, 'cause it's, 'cause right now it's hooked up to the, um...
That's fine.
We have to decide here. See, you can proceed if you'd like.
Oh, we can go.
So, we're gonna give them the floor. Who would like to speak on behalf of the water department?
We have to open the hearing.
Yeah, hi, this is Greg Lake. I'm with Main Water. Um, I have with me, uh, Michael Cummins, our director of operations, and Mark Vindore. I'm your, um, vice president of administration.
Okay, I just, can I interrupt for a second? Ask, I, I need to interrupt for just a second.
Yeah, one second.
And I apologize to you, and we were talking about opening the public hearing, and you're right. We need a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the water department rate increase. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Now, we can proceed. We're officially open for the hearing.
Thank you. So, I'd like to start off by going over, uh, legal ease on, we filed this, uh, refiling under section sixty-one oh-four of Maine PUC. We just wanted to note that the customer has a right to request additional information relating to the present and proposed rates from the, the department, and the right to an open and fair hearing, which we're having tonight, and the right to assistance from the public advocate. And information on his contact information is in the customer notice. Also, under section sixty-one oh-four, customers have the right to petition the Maine Public Utilities Commission to suspend and investigate the department's rates if on or before June eleventh, twenty-twenty, fifteen percent of the department's customers file with the treasurer of the town and the Public Utilities Commission a petition of asking to review the proposed rates. Uh, and the town has those, uh, petition forms available, if anyone would like those. Signatures on the petitions filed according to section seven are invalid unless accompanied by the printed names and addresses of the signers. And upon request, again, the department will provide this petition form to whoever would like one. So, with that, I would thought I would just give a quick summary of the rate increase. We're proposing no change in rate structure. It's an overall twenty-five-point-eight percent increase in revenue needed for the department. Uh, the public fire will be going up seven-point-nine percent increase, um, effective July first. This will bring the public fire revenues to the max allowed thirty percent requirement of the Maine PUC rule on fire protection. The private fire, we are proposing to increase the twenty-five-point-eight percent effective July first. And then the remaining will be for the metered customers. In this, because of the, uh, allocation of the public fire of only eight percent, this bumps up the metered customers to a thirty-five-point-eight percent overall increase. And we're proposing to do that in three phases. And we're doing this to recognize the short-term, you know, the impact of the customers and, and offsetting and, and also the long-term needs of the district. The revenue requirement is what it is, and, uh, but we're trying to balance the short-term needs of the customers with the long-term needs of the department. So, the current minimum charge for a five-eighths inch meter is fifty-nine dollars per quarter. Each phase, this will go up seven dollars per quarter. So, on phase one, it's a twelve percent increase. We'll go to sixty-six dollars per quarter. Phase two, which would be effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, would be a ten-point-three percent increase to seventy-three dollars a quarter, again, another seven dollar increase. In phase three, effective July first, twenty-twenty-two, would be a ten percent increase to eighty dollars, uh, seven dollar per quarter increase. Again, this still is, um, about a dollar, um, uh, excuse me, one cent per gallon of water delivered to the tap, needing all, you know, uh, drinking water requirements. Uh, we did not calculate any, uh, allowed contingency reserve, that the, the rules allow us to do that, um, or a new mechanism, what's called a capital reserve. We didn't include those in there just to try to keep the rates down. Uh, the last rate increase for the department was back fifteen years ago, back in two thousand and five. Uh, the state average is three to five years, so it's, it is a long time coming. Since two thousand and five, the town lost a major customer, Sylvania, and along with conservation, uh, usage down, where, where, that's about a forty-thousand-dollar a year hit. Operating costs have remained flat over the, over this time, pretty much. And there has been a lot of, uh, new, uh, capital additions. Skater has been added, new pipe on Pine Street. We did borrow money back in two thousand and seventeen. And, um, we're currently averaging about fifty-thousand dollars a year in loss after debt and principal payments are for the department. And we currently don't really have a significant amount of cash on hand. We probably have only twenty days cash on hand at the end of two thousand and nineteen. So, that's my overview of the need for the rates. And we ask that we can get an approval to move forward, and, um, it's been filed with the commission. Our next step would be to update the commission on tonight's hearing. If do any other changes that are necessary, we would refile and have rates going to effect July first, twenty-twenty.
Okay, thank you. Have you gotten any questions from the public, Max, on the stream?
But we, we should ask for them. I have one.
You have one, okay.
I have one that was sent. And, um, I want you to know, I talked to this gentleman. Um, his name was George Jones. And I did not break into any George Jones songs, so I was very proud of myself because, you know, I just love that name. Um, he would not be able to attend the public meeting, but, um, he, he did know about some of our financial issues with this for quite a while. Um, but he had some suggestions, um, and just an absolutely lovely man. But he was put off by high connection charges, his neighbor was, to Town Water, and opted, uh, the person opted to dig their own well. He thinks that, uh, we need to get new connections to the system rather than to expect existing rate payers uh, to continue to bear, uh, the entire financial burden. And his only suggestion was reduced fees for connections. And he just wanted to, uh, thank us for allowing him to express his thoughts on the matter. But we had a, a wonderful conversation on the phone after that. He just wanted his thoughts to be known, and, um, and I did explain how we got to this part, and he did agree that, um, a lot of it was continuity that, you know, and, and we got into the whole manager discussion is when you don't have, you know, somebody here who's here long enough, you, you don't, you don't get the continuity to work on all of these things. So, it was a delightful conversation that we had on the phone.
Okay, great.
But he just wanted to pass on his thoughts.
And I, if I could add one thing, um, during the contract renewal discussion that we had with Main Water, and that contract is now in place, um, there was, there's a mechanism in the contract that calls for a bid process for connections to residential and commercial properties, and it's coordinated with the owner of the property. And the approval of the price is up to the owner of the property as well. Am I misrepresenting that? Anybody over there in Main Water, am I correct in what I'm saying? Mark? Is, I got a thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So, uh, it's not a panacea, it's not the greatest solution, doesn't mean things are gonna go down, but it does mean the process is transparent, and the owner is in, involved in the process from day one if they're talking about getting a new connection to their property. So, yeah, that's all I had to say. Was there anything else anybody had, wanted to add on that?
And there does not appear to be any other comments from the public.
Nothing, Max?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, so therefore, if there are no more public comments, I guess I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on closing the hearing? All in favor? Okay, the hearing is closed. Now, we're ready for a vote. And to act on the Main Water rate increase proposal, is there a motion to...
So moved.
So moved? Is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the Main Water rate increase proposal to allow them to go forward with the process with the Public Utility Commission. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Let me get that settled.
Yeah, after how many years?
Two years, thirteen.
Well, a big thank you to Abden and Julie for taking the, taking.
Taking a ride.
Yeah, getting that process started, it took a while.
But, you know, it just goes to show you can't do it all. And honestly, I mean, you know, I would have never known, probably for another year, if it hadn't been for him mentioning something.
Yeah, and I need to talk and mention too the important work the Water.
The Water Committee has been phenomenal.
They've stepped up big time.
They did, yeah.
I'm just glad with the new theme, losing, I think this.
Well, and it's tough because it's terrible, the increase has to happen at this point in time. It's absolutely horrible, but at the same token, it's been long overdue.
Yes, I'm just glad we're getting it fixed.
If there's significant issues, we can work with people. I'm sure we'll find a way.
Yep. Okay.
We always do.
Are we all set on that one? The next public hearing concerns liquor license renewal for Jeff Herd, DBA Linares Tavern. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay. Is there any public comment, Max? Anybody streaming anything in?
Well, remember, there's a delay, so.
Right.
Right now, it's just finishing out the vote we did on.
Oh, okay.
So we just have to wait a little bit.
Wait a bit.
Yep.
So do we have anything?
There is no complaints, the police department has received no complaints. Hopefully, they'll open back up soon to full.
Yeah, I keep wondering, staff, I went down to Friendship today just while we were waiting for the stick to chuck to Wallace's. And boy, are they organized. They've got the signs up, they want you to wear a mask when you walk in, they tell you which way to go when you walk in, they give you something to clean your hands off with, you do your thing, you come back to the counter, there's a big glass screen there. It's just really nicely done. And my hat off to them.
And if you have out of state plates.
Don't, that's right.
Don't go in.
Don't go in.
They'll bring it to you.
Good point.
And they started that right, right from the get-go, they were, yeah, that Ernie. Ernie was good. I'd just like to point out that this looks like Abden's sign.
I shouldn't see anybody come see the call.
That's his signature.
I agree.
That's a good signature.
Yeah, I know, but I looked at that and I said, oh, my word.
I didn't see any comments, did you, Max?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Act on liquor license renewal for Jeff Herd, DBA Linares Tavern?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, that one's done. Now we need to open another public hearing for Odd Illwise Farm Brewery Liquor License.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing is open.
Go ahead, Max.
No public comment?
Max will be a public comment, I'm sure. It's his Friday night favorite place.
Yeah, well, I.
Well, I mean, if we propose on Friday, I'm not here anymore.
Yeah, but you can go up there and take out, you can come in and take a pizza home with you.
That's true, I could be.
Excellent pizza.
And a growler.
A growler.
Yep.
Drive-through.
Yeah, drive-through growler.
And it's quicker than a tire change at the Indianapolis five hundred. Boy, are they working on us.
I don't think so.
I mean, I also told the chat ahead of time that we were, you were going to look for any comments from Odd Illwise, so I haven't heard anything.
Nothing, we're good.
Okay, no public comment, anything from the board? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there, is there a motion and a second, all in favor? Public hearing is closed, is there a motion to act on the liquor license application for Odd Illwise Farm Brewery?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
They're an asset to the community.
Yep. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, and I don't know if we need a whole thing. Section two discuss honoring our graduates.
Yes, yeah, where would you like to put that?
I do not know, anywhere you think it belongs.
What is it, Jan?
On hundred twelve point four.
Honoring our graduates.
End the meeting.
Yep.
And I just have a solid waste disposal agreement.
Ah, they got that done.
Yeah, they came down to three years.
They did?
Yes.
Well done, Julie. Good for you.
Every once in a while, a blind squirrel gets a nut.
Solid waste what?
Solid waste disposal agreement.
Is that twelve five?
Sorry?
Is that twelve five?
That'd be twelve five, yeah. Okay, is everybody okay with that? Is there, do we want a motion or just my consensus? It sounds to me like everybody's in agreement, so we'll proceed. Twelve four will be discussion of the high school graduates, twelve five will be the solid waste disposal agreement. Any citizen comments, Max?
No.
Nope.
Just Ruben. Ruben says he's, Ruben comments all the time, he says he's sold. I'm sold, he says. He's gonna go get a, I think he's gonna go get a growler and a pizza.
I'd like to say something about Ruben, we've been exchanging emails this week, and he actively participated in a broadband forum. Was it the Island Institute that sponsored it? I think it was. And they, he made a comment that they want to quote, it was a really good comment. And I'm not going to give it verbatim, but the effect was, you know, broadband is like a utility. Back in the day, when people didn't have telephones, or sewer, or water, it was something that the communities recognized as an indispensable need for the health and progress of the community. Broadband is the same thing. That's his, and I, I think that's true. Try to get along these days without broadband in your community. And it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to do.
When they quote him, will they quote Waldenborough?
I hope they do, I hope they put Ruben Rahar Waldenborough on the list. Select Board comments. Katie, do you have anything?
Quiet as a mouse. Except for the food bank drive, this is my second week doing it.
Did you do it this week?
Yes.
Thought you was crippled after the first week.
I was, but I came back.
I was told you wasn't coming back.
In a big way.
I was told you wasn't coming back, because you couldn't move from.
Oh.
She recovered.
Yeah, recovered.
Thank you.
But anyways, it's been an honor doing it, and I'll keep doing it until it no longer is here at the town office.
Yep.
I gotta tell you, girls of the Select Board, they, they have stepped up. Telling you.
Thank you to both of them.
Jan was here too.
Yep, we get those assembly lines going. Teamwork.
Yes, it's a wonderful process to see.
I wasn't able to be here to be box boy, but.
You were not box boy, and you were missed.
I was working.
You were very missed not being our box boy today.
Wanted to echo what Katie was saying too, but everyone just talks about the food pantry, that's just excellent. You know, some of us was involved with how it was before, which it will probably be again at some point. It's excellent. But the other thing, want to thank everyone for doing the math. I know that's up and down, depends where you go, but I thank everyone for that. And the other people I'd like to thank is it's like the boss and a couple volunteers, they bring all these lunches and stuff around to all the children. And I've actually, I got quite a conversation with one of them, I probably held her up for a while, but it's just amazing what they do, it really is. And I believe the two that's with her are volunteers and just, they're all, it's exceptional, it's touching.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing to say. The Lash family came in and helped out today, the chief's wife and his kids.
And his father.
And they just jumped right in and did a wonderful job. I overheard one of them was noodle girl. So she was, she was in charge of doing the noodles for each of the bags. They had bags all over the floor. So she put the noodle in one bag, another kid put something else, and another kid put.
Which was really good, because we, us old people can't bend over like we used to. You're hurting down there.
But they were a huge help today, believe me.
They were.
And thank you Lash family for doing that.
Wonderful, cool. Abden?
Nope.
You're good?
Yep.
Well, Katie's already said it, I was just going, no.
Sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry.
No, that's good. I was impressed with the, how we just naturally formed an assembly line. And everybody seemed to work very smoothly, and the atmosphere was really pleasant. And it was, it was very nice.
Yep.
We got the job done.
That's right, amazingly fast.
I know.
That's not the bags, I didn't think, oh my, we're going to be here for another year.
Four hundred and twenty-five bags in under an hour.
Four hundred and twenty-five.
Last week is what, three twenty?
We broke the meat down into large, small, and mediums. Just because we wanted to be more, trying to get the right numbers.
I helped Paul with some of the candy he was putting at the end. And that, once the bags are there, that became a, can you hit it? And I hit it, I hit it every time, hit the bags, that was kind of fun.
That's typical Paul.
We have, we have to thank Rennie's, because they gave us some really good chocolate. And everybody really appreciates it, I know, we're not supposed to be putting that into the.
Well, it's nice that they.
Food pantry bags, because it's sugar, but it's a treat.
Yeah, it is.
It's a little decoration on the top.
Treat.
It's a treat.
I just, I just want to say thank you to you. It's been a stressful time.
Yes, it has, it's unbelievably stressful. And I'm not handling it really well.
She has kept it together, and she's stepped up, she speaks her mind when she needs to, but she's held this thing together, and we, you in particular have done some great things while this has been going on, so I thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I, I, it's, I'm not going to say it's been easy, because it has not been easy.
It's been very difficult.
It's been very difficult. And it's, you go through it and you think it's, okay, I got this, I got this, I got this, I got this done, it's good. And then something else, and it's just, it's balancing people's needs versus people's wants, and people, and the employees, and trying to maintain that, it's hard. And then, you know, they always say, oh, you know, you're the boss, and that's true, but this is like your family, it becomes your family. And, and, you know, decisions to cut people's hours or, and their livelihoods, it's not easy, and it's not pleasant. And then trying to maintain the level of service that we want to provide, because I've always taken, we took great pride, as I think, of town in providing exemplary service, I mean, when everybody else was closing on Fridays, and we, we extended our hours, five days a week, and to have to change that now, I understand why we have to. And part of it too is a balance of how you, and Marcus said it best at our budget meeting, you know, he's more optimistic than me. And he should be, I want him to be, I want him to be optimistic as my recreation director. But as the town manager and seeing the revenue and, and not knowing the uncertainty, I have to be a pessimist, and that's so not me. You know, because I want to think if it's all going to be good, but, you know, I'm very concerned. And I'm very proud, though, of the food pantry, that, that all the employees, the fire department, EMS department, police department, everybody's coming together and really working well together with the food pantry folks. The food pantry's gotten two more volunteers were there today.
Nice.
Totally new, being trained. So I think that the food pantry, when it goes back to being in, you know, in a different location without, you know, our physical support, they will have some new volunteers.
We were hoping that would happen.
Yes, yes, and everybody's so thankful, but we did feed one more family this week, so we're up to a hundred and twenty-four families, and that number appears to be the right number. I don't know how many new families. But that speaks to that there is some significant need in Waldenborough, and we need to address that, so. That would be about all I have.
Okay, I would add one thing, and I know you've made this announcement as well, but you're open now from Monday through Thursday?
Yes.
Four days a week?
We are now open Monday through Thursday, nine to five. And you can register your boats online. And shortly, you will be able to register your vehicles online. We went and did a rapid renewal run-through. We had a Guinea pig that we used in the office to put their first rapid renewal through. So as soon as that hits where it's supposed to hit, we will be going live.
And you're not planning on opening the office quite yet? You're still waiting for guidance?
So, so here's, opening the office, right now, we're what I call curbside, and I do think we will in the near future be opening up to the public. We got an email from the MMA the other day saying guidance would be coming from higher up on how for us to open, but I do believe when we open, it will be one person at a time in the foyer. We have, just so everybody is aware, we have been cleaning, having this building professionally cleaned every day, because we do have twenty-four seven employees and the public. We may not have the public restrooms open, that's something that we're waiting for direction on. But we do have the Plexiglas up, and we will ask that masks be worn. And I just want to say something about the masks, because we get a lot of questions, and our chief Lash brought this up. Some people can't wear masks because of health reasons, so we just have to be mindful of that. And I think everybody's trying to get used to the new norm, so if we can just be a little bit patient, I think that's something that we can do. Stores do have the right to dictate how they do things. And just because one person may not agree with that, it doesn't mean we can send the police in. So we have to be very careful that we're doing it the right way. I think everybody just has to learn to be respectful and kind. So that's where we're at. But we will have, we will have all those requests and rules, I guess, well-known before we actually make, you know, the decision to open.
Yep.
And it's not like we don't want to be open, we stayed open longer than anybody, it's just we want to make sure that everybody's safe. And that's for the employee's safety as well as the public's.
And even if you haven't been open, you've been available.
We've been, well, we've been here, we have been physically in the building every day, with the exception of the snowstorm on April tenth, I think it was. I was here, but the office wasn't open, but we've been here the whole entire time. And people are learning that, it's interesting. The Santa box is everybody's favorite, I don't know how, we're going to have to get another box to replace the Santa box. So, and taxes are being paid, cars are being registered. But like I said, now we will have the whole reregistration online that you can do. And that's one of the things we were talking about today, is how do we police how many people come in during, we had a meeting this morning, and also, how do we do a touchless transaction? You know, people are bringing in cash or things like that, so we just have to figure out how to make it more touchless. We're going to get a ring, and so we can see when there's, if there's a line outside and then buzz people in, so we'll figure out something.
Cool.
For sure.
And you can still register your car here?
You can still register your car here if you choose to, it's just from that survey that we did, seventy-five percent of the people would like to do, and honestly, they're the people that were mostly on Facebook, and they're going to be, it's the younger people that can do all that. You know, my daughter registered, sat in my living room the other day and registered, reregistered her car right.
With her cellphone?
In the living room with her cellphone, I was like, okay, fine, she goes, yeah, that's how we do it. Who knew?
I had to call prescriptions in, I don't, and I don't like doing that. I'd much rather walk down there and hand you my paper. But I get it.
Anyway, that's Max's generation.
Yep, yep.
By the way, I have Ruben's actual quote, if you're interested.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah. You know what, I'll let it just go.
No, you read it.
No.
You've got the microphone right here.
All right. Ruben's actual quote, "Imagine your neighbor is unable to get telephone service. How about electricity, running water? What if I told you that lack of access to broadband can have just as negative of an impact? Education, employment, even the value of a home are impacted by lack of connectivity." That was Ruben's quote.
Yep, thank you.
Though I don't have that charisma that Ruben sets off when he says it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Revised town manager contract?
I did not get that together, did you?
I have a different, I have another suggestion to make. And the suggestion is that we make it, that we make a part of our minutes to this meeting what our intention is. You have foregone your increase in salary this year. And the understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I for, I for, I've given it up for twenty twenty.
That's right.
And twenty twenty-one.
That's the fiscal year, twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
That's right.
Because I was due May first.
Yep.
And then I'll be due next May first.
So this has to be, this has to be part of the minutes for this meeting. And when we review the minutes, we'll make sure it's in the minutes. I think your contract as written gives us flexibility. So I believe in the contract, we, in terms of the contract, we have the flexibility. Right now, we're acknowledging as a board, and if anybody disagrees, please speak up, but I think we're acknowledging as a board that you have foregone that scheduled increase.
Correct.
That was supposed to take place almost two weeks ago and didn't. And that, in effect, lowered the budget of the town manager by a not insignificant, not insignificant amount. So first, our thanks to you for doing that, and second, our assurances to you that we will make that good when things get back to normal. So that you will not be out of pocket for that.
And I would say phase it in so it doesn't hurt too bad.
Fair enough. But we can figure.
And there's ways to make it hurt less for the town.
Yep.
So I think that when we do do that, I think what we should do is stipend it, get me back on track. And, and that way, you're not having to pay some of the extra stuff you would typically pay, but we'll figure it out. But I just, there's no way to take a raise. But I just, there's no way to take a raise when you're cutting other than you just can't do that.
But it is a part of the minutes at this meeting and so it's part of the public record.
Perfect.
And it's known to everybody, all right? Is there any, is there anybody who objects to that? I'm gonna assume that this is a matter of consensus here at this table. And I, I'm hearing, I'm, I'm seeing nods that, that is the case, okay. Thank you very much.
Abdon's asleep.
Sorry?
Abdon's asleep.
No, he's not.
He did not nod.
Oh, he's not.
Thank you.
Now I'm asleep.
That was a bubble.
Ruben's asking, um, at some point we are going to recover. Will there be a plan to reinstate that for our town managers with that I assume being the raise?
Yes, yep. That's what this discussion was about.
All right.
Yep. Okay, okay. Um, Chapel Road broadband?
So here's where we're at.
Yeah.
We made the, we, we agreed to sign the franchise agreement. And we put in a date. And they're unhappy with the date because of everything that's going on and CMP doing the make-ready. So if there's another, the date was, I think it was October thirty-first.
Yeah.
So I don't know what date they'll be happy with or if they'll be happy with the date given the current climate. And then I, I see both sides of that. Cause they don't want to commit to a date and then something happens and CMP can't do something or. So we're at a standstill. We don't have any leverage unless we sign the franchise agreement. But if we sign this franchise agreement, we don't have any leverage. So I think we, we need to have a decision of what to do. And it's not like we can put this into a budget to have it done. So.
And any, any option potentially faces the same problem that they're facing.
That they're facing of, with CMP doing the make-ready. And I don't think there's a lot of make-ready. I, I did appeal to Sherry, uh, Sh- Sherry, Shelley about the kids on Chapel for schooling. Uh, the importance of the healthcare, uh, because especially now with healthcare, uh, being online. Um, and they're saying that's gonna become a bigger thing because it went so well. Not to mention the nurse who's studying up there. I mean, there's so much that is a issue. I, I, you know, I was so excited about this, um, when we got it. Because I'm thinking, okay, and then we get hit with a pandemic. I mean, it's the little black cloud over poor Chapel Road. And I think.
I just, I, it, it's beyond me why a professional group can't sit down and fashion the language that makes everybody comfortable. I mean, let's say the date is October thirty-first. If there's a force majeure and we're in the middle of it, you extend that date by mutual agreement. I just don't understand.
I'm thinking if there's a way we could have a conversation with CMP to pin them down on a make-ready date. Maybe then, everybody would be much happier.
Ruben has another question. Do we give anything up by signing the, that agreement now? I don't think we are any worse if we do.
Yeah, we do give something up and Julie just mentioned it.
Right.
We, we give up our leverage.
I, I mean, that's.
I'd rather see Julie sort of try to get something hooked up with CMP.
CMP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See where we go from there.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if we can give them, if they can give us a make-ready date and we can say, hey, we're make-ready by that date. You just have to do your part. Then there's no reason not to sign.
No, there isn't. And if you need another month, we're happy to give it to you.
Right.
November thirtieth on there, but you've gotta, you know, you've gotta get it done. Okay. Any other comments on this one?
So we're gonna get in tou- I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So we're gonna get in touch with CMP?
Yeah, Julie's gonna get in touch with CMP.
Okay.
Ruben's asking for you to define the leverage that we're giving up?
Well, because right now the old is in, in force. We have more houses, less, more.
The old miles, the, the old houses per mile.
It was fewer houses per mile, it was nine.
Right.
In the new agreement, it's twenty.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And I don't want to necessarily let that go.
Okay, so it's swapping the houses per mile, okay?
Yep. How was the Shellfish Committee feel about doing an amendment? Or doing a draft ordinance regarding boats?
I think our Shellfish Warden is work-
Regarding boats left at the town landing.
Uh, the Shellfish Warden is working on that. We discussed that at the Shellfish meeting. He's gonna, he's been looking at, um, other town ordinances.
Good.
To make sure that does not happen again.
So you're working on it?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The Shellfish Warden is working on that.
We also had a recommendation from the Shellfish Committee for two new members.
Oh, good.
For the Shellfish Committee.
Yeah, we gotta get their applications in.
And it'll be, uh, they recommended, the, and, cause they've been in attendance, Lee Bennett and.
Israel Harvey.
Israel Harvey.
Oh my goodness, Israel Harvey's grown up?
Israel Harvey has grown up and has a daughter who's in tenth grade. Wow. Who's super, super duper smart.
Harvey girl.
Really smart kid. She was in my office, I was very.
Autumn Harvey?
Autumn.
Autumn, oh, I know her. Yeah. She's a talker.
And she's a clamor. She, she dug the reseed event.
She can do anything.
Craft picker too.
Yep.
So twelve point four was going to be the high school graduation?
Okay, well, um, I just thought that it's so sad that our graduates are missing graduation and, and all the festivities that go with it. So I talked to Julie, uh, a little bit and you were gonna see if you could find any money here?
Tell me how much you need.
Okay, I'm not quite sure, but we'll see. So I talked to Paul and Paul and the fire department and the police department are working together. They're helping, they're going to have a graduation in two parts. It's gonna be like a drive-in graduation. The cars are all gonna be parked there and then they'll have the graduates. Cause they can only have seventy cars. So the fire department's gonna be helping with the park. The, um, the police department is going to be working with them. And there's going to be somewhat of a parade. So the high school has ordered, um, signs with the names of each graduate. There are a hundred and forty of them and I guess they're gonna do this part of the parade. So I called, I talked, I talked to Linda Pease and I, she got theirs through Mail for you in Newcastle. So when I talked to Lynn, who owns that, they have, um, the high school is getting twelve by eighteen, um, signs. The kinds that have the, the brackets put right in. They're getting them that says congratulation MVHS class of twenty twenty with the name. Uh, and they have thirteen dollars apiece. And I talked to Paul, he, then they can make them without the name for cheaper. Less than thirteen, whatever that would be. She didn't give me a number on that, but she said she could come up with something less. Uh, so Paul suggested perhaps doing something that says congratulations to, um, the Don McValley High School, MVHS, whatever graduates on it without a date. And then use them again next spring. Cause those signs last.
Yeah, they do.
So I don't know how many years you could get out of them, but a few anyway, and that would.
Depends on what you get for, if you get decorrigated, the ones that I've seen around, they'll last a long time.
Even my paper ones were fine.
If you put them inside.
Yeah, well, you just put them, find a place to put them. So, um, I didn't know what the rest of you thought. I told her that we had a meeting and we discussed it, but I just thought it would be, my vision was, and I, you can throw in whatever yours is, is just, you know, the lawn full of signs. Um, and it's nice that we have the names. Every time I go by, I look for a name and I know the kids, so that's, it's kind of fun.
That was a good idea.
Yeah, that was a very good idea. I think that was.
My, my niece was ecstatic because her daughter's one of them, so.
Well, we now have people parking at night out there. So you have to be careful waiting for the name to take a pic.
Oh, get a picture, oh, yeah.
My sister got a picture of her nephew, my, my nephew on there the other night.
Yep.
Cody.
Yeah, I know Cody. Um, so I don't know what the rest of you think, but it just, um, I thought it would be nice if the town showed their support for our, our young folks.
I have a suggestion. Is, is this, is this our, um, stipend? Are these things, these papers that we got, is that for our stipends? Did we get our stipend checks?
No.
What, what was, what was the, what did we get?
We got them in June.
This is a void, I'm not sure what it is. Is this what that?
Went to the bank, didn't it?
Yeah, direct deposit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that for the stipend?
I don't know what the void thing is.
Well, the same thing we got last year.
Did it say void on it?
Yeah.
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 So, yeah, she's already.
So they're already?
Done that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, cause I didn't get my federal one.
I didn't either.
You didn't get your stimulus check?
So did we get our stipend checks?
I think so.
Okay.
That's what it would appear.
That's my suggestion.
That's a great suggestion.
I haven't studied yet.
Okay.
As, as a committee, as a board for the town, to show our appreciation to the graduates. Take some money out of our stipend checks, it won't be much, and put it towards these yard signs to put around town.
I, I like that idea.
It, it won't be much because they're what, thirteen dollars apiece?
Right, how many signs do you want?
And how many, okay, so what's.
Well, there'll be less because, I mean, do we want to?
Say fifty, say fifty signs at thirteen dollars, how much is that?
Six seventy.
How much?
Six fifty.
And divided by five.
So, so, so here's the thing I just want to point out. Number one is they have to be put up and taken down.
Fire department said they would, um, Paul said that the fire department would help with that because they're, they're putting.
Well, it doesn't interfere with the flags being put up and taken down. I'm just saying.
No, just on the lawn here.
Okay. Oh, oh, well, we don't need fifty signs for the lawn here, do we?
I think a whole bunch would be nice.
These are just the Waldahboro graduates, right?
Yes, right, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, well, it, it could just say Madon McValley High School.
I, I'm just asking the question. I don't have a preference either way. I just need to know how you've been presenting the idea, that's all.
Well, uh, there's five, five towns, right?
Yep.
In Zadforty. What about asking them to do the same thing?
Yeah.
Everybody, all the town, town man, uh, town board of selectmen chip in. What is, what is, uh, what's the tally per person for Waldahboro?
I don't know how many actually students in Waldahboro.
No, 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 if we got fifty signs at thirteen dollars apiece.
They'd probably, they'd be less.
And then divided by five.
Six fifty.
I'm gonna say like ten.
What, what was that number?
Uh, it's be a hundred and.
One thirty?
Yeah, one thirty apiece.
Per person?
I, I love the idea.
I'm game.
It makes it really simple.
Now, we can either keep it for Waldahboro or we can ask the other town.
I, I think it should be a Waldahboro thing.
I think, I think representing Waldahboro, I, I just think it would be so nice.
I think if I called the other towns, you don't know when they get paid and you don't know if they, they might not make as much as you guys do.
I know, but wouldn't they be left out if?
They might be doing something on their own.
Friendship makes a lot more than we do.
And we are putting the graduate's name, all of the graduate's names on our side.
Four times more than we do.
Every single graduate.
Every single graduate, yeah.
On what?
The town sign has all graduates, like a hundred and forty.
But it's not gonna go on the, uh, the yard sign?
No.
It's gonna say congratulations, MVHS graduates?
Is that what you wanted to say?
Yes, I don't, I don't think it ought to be specific.
To be used for next year.
Because it's about everyone, cause some of these other towns might not do nothing.
Okay, all right, and that way, I think it'll be cheaper.
What do we do, give the money to you?
Oh, I don't know. I can call tomorrow if that's what you want to say. And, um, that way we can keep them and use them again. Paul, you know, Paul said that they'd be more than happy. They're gonna have the fire trucks out, outside the graduation, I think it's June seventh. We'll find out. With flag, trying to get the streamers.
And we can put some right across of the front lawn here.
And stuff, they're gonna have, yeah, so fifty would give us enough to be all over. It's like those, um, one of those birds that the fire department used to do.
Flamingos.
Flamingos, it's like flamingo.
We should put the flamingos out there in that, Madon Mc colors.
They're over in Thomaston.
They're right over in Thomaston right now. Well, I blocked you when I first got here.
I go to Rangelay in the winter a lot. I used to work up there in the winters and they have, uh, flags for their basketball team.
Send Jan a check.
And, well, anyway.
Well, I got that.
Every time I drive through Rangelay in the winter and I see the, the flags on poles out there for their kids. I always think, oh, what a lovely town they love their students and it's mostly basketball.
It's always basketball.
Yeah.
What is it, a hundred bucks apiece?
One thirty.
One thirty. Well, we'll see what she comes up with. Maybe wherever you're going to would, would be maybe donate something.
Well, that's their business, so I don't.
I know.
Okay.
I'm game, is everybody?
I think we're all in.
I, I'm ha- I'm happy to do it.
Jan, just quick questions. So the cost per sign is thirteen dollars?
Well, with the names on it.
No, with the names, cheaper, cheaper, it's less than thirteen dollars.
All right, and if you got the money, when would they be made?
ASAP.
Right, I would call tomorrow.
Okay.
I would call tomorrow and order them.
All right.
And you'll need, you'll need to get the wires along with them.
Yes, the wires come with them, everything's all.
Yeah.
Done and we could help.
Then we'll put them all over the lawn.
What's that?
Then we'll put them all over the lawn.
Yeah, we can put them on the lawn. We don't have to, Paul offered. But then both our, our fire and police department are doing a lot for, for working with the school.
I think, I think during this time where they can't have proms and they can't have their graduation. I think by us showing them that we appreciate them, I think that would go a long ways.
Gotta be hard.
Yeah.
It's that, at that age, that's what's most important to you.
Yep.
I sometimes feel that age.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan, that's a good idea. So you've got to go on now?
Okay, I'll take, I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
And they'll, you know what the.
So the next, uh, next item on the agenda, uh, twelve point four will be the, uh, solid waste disposal agreement?
So as you remember during budget time, we talked about the closing of our construction demolition debris. Landfill up at the transfer station. So we're going to have to start transporting. So we've made a arrangement with Waste Management Disposal Services of Maine for sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents per ton plus two dollars a ton to the state of Maine fee. And after that, uh, it will be increased annually by four percent beginning, uh, May fifteenth. They had originally wanted a thr- a five-year contract, John wanted a three-year contract. So I tried my best, um, to get the four percent down. And to get five year, uh, three years, but I can only get the three years.
Well, I think that's well done.
The four percent is what they've done in other places and they have in five, but I, I.
That's only over three years and by then.
I've chatted, they've seen an agreement, so if you guys are okay with me signing this.
But they're gonna have a dumpster here for us to put it right in as it comes in? Are they gonna have a dumpster here for us to put it right in as it comes in?
He's gonna have to have something there, because it's gotta be hauled away.
Right.
That would be apt.
Sorry. Did Abby ask me that, or did you ask me that?
I did ask you that.
I'm sorry, I swear to God, I thought it was good.
You can't see where it's moving.
Well, what I'm thinking is, what I'm thinking is, like, when I had my building tore down, my small building.
Yeah.
Had a dumpster right there, just go right from there to the dumpster, if they had it up there, they get the truck, the tractor to do it. If people bring in a bunch on the day pad, they could put it right in the trailer, and they can come grab it when it's full and be gone.
This is just for the transport from us to where it's gonna be dumped, so, you're, you're suggesting makes a lot of sense. I mean, when people modify houses or build new houses and have stuff to throw out, it's always, I've always seen a dumpster there, and I don't know where to get them.
Yep, oh yeah, you can, they, they'll drop them right off, and if we're paying them by the ton to do it, I don't see why they wouldn't have a, reason why they wouldn't bring a forty or a fifty yard dump down, ba- uh, trailer down, to just leave it there for the guys up there to fill it as it comes in.
As a service from the transfer station?
Yes.
It's something to talk to John about.
Now, this is...
Just like what they did with the sheet rock that just came in, that, uh, they just got rid of, they had boxes, Gordon Libby's...
I'm just pointing out, this is a different issue, this is just to get it from us to the, to the landfill, how we...
Right, but...
How we collect it is worth talking about.
Right, but I mean, instead of having forty or fifty yards piled up...
Yep, and having to reload it.
And then had to reload it as, as...
Yeah, buying dumpsters for it is much easier. Buying the dumpsters for it, or putting it in a dumpster is much easier.
Yeah, right.
I agree.
Well, they get plenty of dumpsters, we shouldn't have to buy them, they should get plenty of dumpsters, if they're gonna transport it and everything, they should supply us with the dumpsters.
Well, this is just where we're dumping.
Mm-hmm.
This is just for the dumping.
So, that doesn't include...
Doesn't include transport.
Oh, it doesn't? So what are they gonna charge us for transport then?
I have no idea, well, the, the going rate right now for solid waste is, uh, twenty bucks a ton.
So, it, it's not sixty-nine dollars a ton, it's more like eighty-nine, ninety dollars a ton?
Well, that's for the disposal.
That's for the disposal, I mean, he was getting like a hundred and ten bucks, so he's got a good deal on this.
So, what you need is so Julie can end an agreement with us, right?
Just for the disposal.
Just for the disposal.
How it's transported and all of that is a whole nother story.
I'm guessing the same people who transport the solid waste will tran- transport the CDV.
Gordon Libby.
Gordon Libby.
Gordon Libby, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah. But that's still, that's worth talking about.
He's a good fellow too.
Yeah.
They've been very good to us.
Yeah, done my septic stuff.
Gordon Libby?
Yeah.
He was one of my first jobs, written his garage shop.
I had all those kids in school.
So, is there, I don't think we need a motion.
No, I just wanted to let you know what was going on.
Thank you very much. And thanks for getting that three years.
And for most of that, we get money for that anyways to help cover that cost, correct?
Yes, the dumping, the disposal fee. I think he thinks, given this rate, he can keep it at six bucks a pound. He was thinking...
Six, six cents a pound.
Yeah, six...
Six cents.
Sorry, I say six bucks?
Yeah, that's true, dude.
Thank you. Six cents a pound.
Oh, I have one thing, before we go, because I thought the warrant was on, because now that I'm your clerk, I have all these things I worry about. I asked the MMA, and I'm sorry, I forgot this, it, do you, when you read the warrant as is, that whole fireworks ordinance gets me confounded.
It's not right.
No, I know.
No, it's, it's gotta be...
But I, but, but, what the attorney told me is that we could change the title to make it sound so much more of what we're actually voting on. And he suggested, for example, an ordinance prohibit commu- consumer fireworks.
Oh, sorry, Katie.
Yeah, yeah.
And then he put, because like, I read on here how we've always done any changes to the shellfish, and he said, an ordinance prohibit tampering with conservation measures and projects. Because I use the word that is in the ordinance, but, so we do have some, some leeway with what the title of the ordinance is. I couldn't offer an explanation like a yes vote means this happens, or a no vote means that, but we could modify so that it's better. So I was gonna come up with the language with that, but...
So, so that's what it is?
I'm gonna give you guys tomorrow, hopefully, a warrant, and I would love you all to prove it, since it's the first one, and Max and I are, are electioning together.
Oh, fun.
Because he is going to be my registrar of voters, um, but I've been put into the system, processing absentee ballots to make sure that we get them off the server, so we're...
That's great.
Well on our way.
So, in terms of the timetable, we need to have hearing...
I need to get this to, no, I need to get this... To the printer by Friday, and then we need to have the hearing.
Yep, you wanna have the hearing afterward?
Well, we typically do.
Okay. Okay.
So you're gonna give us a draft of the warrant?
I'm gonna give you a draft, but I have to send what's on, you have to have this sent in well before. Typically, this would have been done a while ago, and our hearing was on May tw- something, right?
It was the first meeting in May, I think.
So you're gonna email it to us?
Right, but I would have had, this should have technically been in, in April, and we would have had our May hearing. So, it's the hearing to answer questions and things, because we already know what's on the warrant. And then we'll schedule our hearing in, um, in June.
June.
But I just, I want you guys to look it over, and since it's the first one, and I have tons of, there's tons of ways I can screw this up.
Well, it'll have all the new, it'll have all the new numbers.
It'll have all the new numbers in it, but I also want you to... I want, I want it to be understandable when people vote, what they're voting for or against. So I think, in, it, like we said, we can, we can, um, fix that with the title.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
Rather than just saying, shellfish, the shellfish thing is here and it's available, you can say, a shellfish ordinance too, and take part of what the title says, because I think that makes much more sense.
Have the title say what it is, yeah.
Wasn't there one other thing tonight?
This is Clint, I don't know.
I know, I'm looking at you, Clint.
Um, the only other thing was, did you wanna keep the, um, the taxes to four times a year?
Am I looking at all?
You're getting there.
Well, that, isn't there a timing issue with that, because it's got four sections to it, the first payment is due...
Well, with the four times a year, we thought it would be a good idea and be helpful to people during this time, but from that survey, it was a mixed bag. It was a third, a third, a third said yes, a third said no, and a third said maybe. And I'm just thinking is, you're gonna have, they just made their payment, and then they're gonna have to pay again.
Well, I got it out of the way for this year because I didn't know when that would take effect, if we done it.
So I just wanted to clarify that, if we wanted to still do that, or if you'd like to give it...
If we started it in November like it would normally start, and then go from there?
That's what I wonder, if we should start it into another year.
But then you're not gonna get...
No, I know.
You're not gonna end fiscally properly.
I got you.
I just wonder if you confuse people.
So I'm just saying that for them to pay it now, and then to pay it again in August is gonna be a really tough road to hoe.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I think our intention was good, but we might wanna just keep it the same.
It may not be the right time to do it.
It might not be the right time to do it, so I will put on the warrant that it's gonna stay the same twice a year. And I think maybe we just have to push the tax club, that you can make tax club payments. Did everybody sign?
Yeah, it wasn't, no... No, ever a big push for that, whether it should have come from, you know, I always thought that was an issue, but...
But the tax club would be helpful probably for a lot of people.
I think that's what he's talking about, is there wasn't a push for the tax club there as much as it should have been.
Yeah.
So, items for the next meeting, agenda items?
Warrant review.
Yep.
Well, public hearing, we can do a public hearing.
Anything else you'd like to see on that, anybody?
I think we'll probably do the confirmations for the shellfish committee.
Okay.
Who is my interview crew? Katie and Bob?
Katie and I.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
So you're gonna have to interview these two, it'll be a short interview, I'm sure, Israel doesn't say much.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
I look forward to seeing you. Yeah, I don't mind, are you okay with interviewing them in this room, Katie, proper distance?
What? What?
Are you ca- are you okay interviewing them in person?
Sure.
With the six-foot distancing?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
I'll set that up. Oh, did you want to announce when your licensing things are going on?
Okay, yeah, I can do that, um, our last shellfish meeting, we advanced everything a month, the conservation time will not have to be done until July sixteenth, your, uh, application and your conservation time done. And we're not selling licenses until, until August, the fir- the second Monday, like it would be in the second Monday of Ju- July, we're doing it the second Monday of August, so...
So they'll operate on the existing license for a...
Until, till the end of August, until the end of August, August thirty first.
An additional one, basically, that makes sense.
And we're gonna put a, a something, so, we're gonna put it in a yellow bucket outside so people, they can just, they don't have to come in the office, they can just pick up an application outside the door. We're gonna make it as easy as possible.
And we talked, we discussed, we did discuss about reducing license fees and stuff like that, but what happens if there, Justin is needed? We should continue to have that money in the budget in case we do need him to do extra, extra, uh, patrolmen. Because if people haven't, have lost their jobs or gotten their jobs, you know, he's gonna have to be out there to educate them on the process. We had one guy in the St. George River the other day that come down off the shore digging a closed area. So, he didn't have a clue, he just see guys out there digging, just walked out like, like it was nobody's business, and just started digging, so...
And Justin's doing it, trying to organize a cleanup too, isn't he?